All right, welcome everyone. Let's call to order our December meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. At this time, oh, you have to do that. Okay, at this time, if we could all stand and welcome in Cub Scout Troop 3634. We'll meet us in the pledge. Thanks.
What all please rise with the presentation of the flag of the United States of America. Halle Guy, present the colors. Pledge. Go, salute. Whatever will please follow me on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge. Halle Guy, dismiss.
Okay, we're gonna do our welcome in a second, but before we do that, we need to have Mrs. Bonk, if you'd be willing to fill in as the secretary this evening since Mrs. Cobal is not here, would you be willing to do that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. With that, I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Ween to welcome in the Bonk for the evening.
Sure, welcome everyone to our December meeting for the Forest Hills Board of Education. To help provide the welcome here to Thornapple Elementary, I'd call on the principal, Mr. David Lyon, to provide tonight's official welcome. Mr. Lyon.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Good evening, school board. Wanted to thank you. My name is David Lyon, the principal here at Thornapple. Before we begin, I'd like to extend congratulations to our new school board members, Holly Gabor and Mallory Niedmeyer. Mallory Niedmeyer is a parent here, and she's also on our PTO board, and we couldn't be happier for her joining the school board here. Thank you for all your support, board, or our staff, our students, and our efforts. I am here with you tonight to share an instructional highlight around our work to the other elevating student voice in school. You know, it wasn't long ago that classrooms or spaces where all conversation was directed through the teacher standing in front of the room. The occasional question would be shared with the class, and the teacher would pick a willing hand, occasionally in an effort to keep people paying attention, unwilling hand. The answer would be shared, and the lesson would continue. And somewhere in the nineties, we began to see classrooms set up in straight rows disappear, and more table groupings became the norm. Why the change? Well, teachers recognized the power of students working with each other as they learned. Small group lessons became the norm. Teachers sitting with small groups of students and teaching students content, and also how to listen and learn from their peers, became the norm. And research by John Hedy reveals that lessons that have students working with each other and talking to their line of thinking has an effect size that can equate to two-plus years of growth in a single year. This is a skill that can help students working toward proficiency and also enable our most able learners to exceed their own expectations. Student voice lives in the K-5 speaking and listening standards. These are standards that build on each other's complexity, just like math, just like reading, just like writing, from one year to the next. These words come directly from the common core. Our work is to build a foundation for college and career readiness. Students must have ample opportunities to take part in a variety of rich, structured conversations as part of a whole class, in small groups, and in partnership. Being productive members, these conversations require that students contribute accurate, relevant information, analyze and synthesize a multitude of ideas in various domains. The key phrase here is ample opportunities. Unfortunately, these standards lend themselves to every part of a student's day. The work begins at kindergarten, and this is the kindergarten standard. It was the kindergarten standard, we're getting it. What we would like kindergartners to be able to do by the end of kindergarten is participate in collaborative conversations with diverse partners about kindergarten topics and texts with peers and adults in small and large groups. This means that they'll follow agreed-upon rules for discussions and continue a conversation through multiple exchanges. That means not just one answer repeated back to the teacher, but the ability to share that conversation back and forth. Think about how complex that would be for a five-year-old, but we know that they can do it with the right teaching and guidance. It's important that we describe what student voice is. The term "student voice" describes how students give their input to what happens within the school and classroom. Our desire is for students to know that their expertise, opinions, and ideas are valued in all aspects of school life. Student voice permeates all levels of our work together, from students participating in small group classroom conversations to students partnering in classroom design or establishing expectations of each other in the classroom community. The key takeaway here is, it's not simply just kids talking more. It's not just students talking more. It's about being active participants in what they want their room and community to look like and also in the learning that they are doing. So here's where we're going tonight. This lives ample our two opportunities within the year. Tonight, we'll hear how it lives in classroom constitutions through one of our classroom teachers. We'll hear a conversation strategy that's used in all of our classrooms. We'll learn about number talks from a couple students, how community meetings work with a third-grade teacher, what solving conflict sounds like with student voice at the center of it, and finally, what gratitude circles look like in our kindergarten classrooms. This is the voice of Mr. Peterson, he's a fourth-grade teacher here.
I think as educators start to think about ways that they can involve student voice in their classroom, one of the earliest examples can come through the creation of a social contract or a class constitution. I think for me and my class, one of the things that we try to do is really have an idea of student involvement and accountability in the classroom, the sense that the things they say, the things they feel are going to be necessary for their success actually come from them. I know that in my class, one of the things that we do is I'll send around kind of a blank Google Doc that just kind of has a quick header at the top about things that they feel like they might need or things that they might want in order to be successful in their room this year. And so students compile a list of those things, then we go through them together. What you'll find is a lot of commonalities in what students want, kind of what they're after. And then we use that to guide the principals for our room, essentially. And this can change year to year. I've had examples where one class constitution would look different than another. I think ultimately, the idea as effective educators is that we are wanting to have student voice kind of a part of all that we're doing in education. Certainly, when it comes from an instruction standpoint, we're consistently looking for students to be carrying the academic load. But this idea can also be carried through all aspects of how your classroom environment is set up and run just by that inclusion of student voice. So in my room, as we've gone through, we create a list, then we kind of go through and essentially vote or try to find those commonalities of things that we are looking for in order to be successful throughout the calendar year. So far so, even further to that point, is that we even draft kind of what measures might be taken if the constitution is not followed. Students come up with their ideas for how that should go. One, it really does create a cohesive environment where students can see themselves reflected in the social contract. Instead of just a word that gets thrown up, it's the ideas that they're after and things that might need to happen if those ideas are not followed. I think a lot of times, we are quick to incorporate student voice into our instructional practices. But equally as important, of course, is that students are seeing their voice in kind of the day-to-day operations of the classroom. So for myself, the class constitution has been highly effective.
Moving forward, I'd like to share a simple strategy that we're using in classrooms in professional learning called Think-Pair-Share. Think-Pair-Share is a technique that encourages and allows for individual thinking, collaboration, and presentation with one simple question. People process at different speeds. In every classroom, it's easy to catch students raising their hands before a question is even finished. Their Hermione grangers in each school are real. We know a few things, though, from those students. The first hands up are not necessarily the ones with the correct answer or the deepest thinking. Two, we know those exuberant handraisers often send a signal to the class that the answer is already someone else's. And three, we know that multi-language learners, which we now refer to as AML students, process a little more slowly, and they would prefer the gift of time, along with our youngest students as well. A teacher who consistently invites each student to think after a question is posed to ensuring that slower processes are given the time for their own response to answer the question. And what that looks like is just five to fifteen seconds after a question is posed, allowing no one's hand to go up, sitting patiently and working through the answer within their mind. Quality is measured in the content of the answer, not how swiftly someone has it answered. The next piece is having students pair with one another. Students invited into paired discussions better ensures the quality of answers coming from students, and the thinking is similar to their partner, provides an emotional boost and confidence. Just think how it feels when you get to share an idea with a friend before you have to talk about it. It also increases that probability that students will take the opportunity to share in front of the whole group. The movement also allows the teacher to listen, elevate answers of individuals who are correct for alternate ways of thinking. The last piece is the invitation to share. And by this point, the responses are plentiful. Everybody feels good about the answer that they've been able to think about and connect with a partner, and more hands are up, and the students who are reluctant to share their thinking, out of it maybe not being correct, are far more likely to share. Next, I'd like to have a couple students explain, Charlotte and Owen, what number talks are and how they make thinking visible through conversation to others.
We're gonna show you how number talk works and how it helps us. First, it helps us because it helps us grow in new ways, and we can also notice that there are many different ways to solve different problems, not the same way every single time. We can also notice from other people who know, who have different ways. We can learn from them and not always learn from the teacher.
We're gonna show you an equation. Fifteen times three hundred.
When you are waiting, when you're waiting, you are going to solve this answer mentally with your brain. And then you will put, if you have one way to solve this, you're gonna put a one at your chest. If you have two ways, two, and if you have three ways, three. So first, Owen is gonna show us his way.
The distributive property. Zero, one. It's four thousand five hundred.
I'm gonna, no. I'm gonna show you my way that I'm going to do it. I'm gonna have fifteen times three hundred. I'm gonna take both of the zeros and put them up into space, and then I have fifteen times three. And fifteen times three is forty-five. Then I bring the zeros back down, and I have the same answer as Owen.
All right, so I'm wondering, but what if the answer is wrong?
That's good. That's really good. And if the answer's wrong, you can just do this?
Yes, you can disagree with somebody. But if you agree with somebody and you have the same answer as them, you can agree with them from me to you, you can agree with them. If the answer is wrong, it is very good, like Owen said, because you're not growing if you have the right answer every single time. You need to learn from your mistakes. And then, if you, like, if I got the wrong answer and Owen has the right answer, if you're really thinking like math and you're seeing it, he'll know what I did wrong. He'll see my mistake.
And I can just do a simple mistake.
Gotcha. Could either one of you guys do this mentally?
I could.
Give it a try. All right, I'll give you some time.
We could just pull apart one of these numbers.
Yeah, so in your mind, just do it right now. So I sped this up. This is about three times speed. What I'd like you to pay attention to is how this might feel if your principal just said, hey, go ahead and do this part, just do it in your head. When they turn around and this goes back to real speed, notice their faces.
Yeah, I think you need to do this one on a whiteboard. It's very hard.
So once in a while, you, once in a while, it might be
It's very hard.
too much to carry in your mind.
But some people can carry a lot in their minds, and they can get this mentally.
Nice.
I mean, Owen can't carry a lot in her mind.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
But we will be able to, eventually.
Very. So I think what that illustrates, just still the joy on their face at not being able to get the answer without a whiteboard, is the idea that really the focus is on the strategy, not on the correct answer. Not that they can't get a correct answer, but it's to challenge someone's way of thinking through the process. This next piece is connected to community circles. We know that regular reflection helps students to learn. In classrooms across Thornapple, reflections and share or community circles is a habit, not an event. Teacher Jessica Hughes shares how community circles are a way of being that sometimes stay on the surface and sometimes move to deeper emotional places in learning.
Hi, my name is Jessica Hughes, and I'm a third-grade teacher here at Thornapple. I'm here to talk with you a little bit about the community circles that we have in my classroom. With community circles, it is born with the idea that we all, as humans, it's natural to us to strive to connect with each other and that we all have gifts that we need to share with each other. So why do we do circles in the classroom? Obviously promotes relationship and community building. It promotes equity within the students. They feel like they have a voice with what they want to say, with their ideas. And then it requires us to deeply listen to each other. So it also helps us slow down, think about what's important, think about our day, what we've learned, and to move on. It encourages vulnerability and risk-taking as well. We ask students to take risks all day long with their learning and academics. And if they're not feeling like they are comfortable or in a safe place, they are less likely to take those risks. So we spend a lot of time upfront, building that community, so that students feel like they have that safe space to take risks in other forms throughout the day. It does create a really strong community within the students. They feel like they are one unit as opposed to individual students within a classroom. And then finally, it does build that capacity to have those difficult conversations. We all have them throughout our day, and the circles provide a framework to have those. It's a safe space. We're there to listen and to learn from each other. So when those difficult times come up, it's easier to repair harm when we have that community there already. I'm gonna show a couple clips of a circle in action. The first one is just a, what I call lightning round circle. It's very fast-paced. It's a quick check-in of how the students are feeling at that moment. Sometimes it's a one to five. Sometimes it's a variety of things, but it's always just in the moment. And then the next clip is from a question of what they like to do, what's their favorite thing to do in the snow? Because that day, we had gotten a lot of snow, so it seemed quite fitting.
Okay, so we have our Wednesday circle. Remember our agreements during the circle, that we show respect by listening to each other, that we are kind, and that it's okay to pass as well. So, lightning round. If you were color, what color would you be right now? Blue. Fast lightning.
Purple.
Go, one color. Blue.
Blue. They blow homes out of snow for mice. And then
I have a lot of mice in my house.
Slaying. And chuck snowballs at my brother.
I like making snow fort kicking and snowmen. I like snowball fights, skating, and slaying. All the things that you could imagine in the snow. Except for getting cold.
Except for getting cold.
Thank you. Mrs. Hughes is here today. She heard her phone, so she didn't come up. Thank you for being here tonight, Jessica. The next piece is connected to dealing with solving conflict. Thornapple is pretty conflict-free. Our students live here harmoniously with each other, day after day. That's not really true. Thornapple has its share of discontent and disagreements in halls and in the playground. Restorative conversations are how we work through those here. It's a practice that we have in Forest Hills and a practice that we embrace. It always reminds me, when I head into any sort of conflict-driven conversation, I think about a story that a counselor shared with me. It was bat time for his son. It went something like this. It's really in the message, not the story. But the four-year-old said, Dad, you know, I grew up, I wanna make bombs. And the dad said, okay. In his mind, he was thinking, all right, where am I gonna go with that? Has his uncle let him watch on TV? How I'm gonna spend this, what books am I gonna buy? And the dad said, though, really? Tell me more about that. Yeah, I wanna make the bombs that blow up underwater. And his thinking was, oh my gosh, I'm gonna pivot on this. He asked one more question. Yeah, tell me a little bit more about that. Yeah, you know those bombs that mom puts in the bath when she takes a bath? I wanna learn to make those, 'cause mom's favorite smell is this, and I think we wanna put some glitter in that. And his message to all of us was, it never hurts to stay in listening mode and to continue to think. And that's what I walk into each time there's conflict here. It's that opportunity to stay in listening mode and to hear both sides of students' story. What the reality is, is somewhere in the middle, and giving students that opportunity to talk it through and to learn from each other almost always results in a preservation of the friendship, new learning happening, and students walking out again. It doesn't mean that a consequence doesn't come, but our primary work is to help students learn from each other and to learn how to resolve things through conversation. And our last piece here tonight is by kindergarten teacher Sarah Moffett. At the end of each day in kindergarten and other classrooms, they share gratitude circles, and they sound like this.
Hello, my name is Sarah Moffett Amryan, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Thornapple Elementary School. I am just here to talk a little bit about our gratitude circle that we do in my classroom. Each day, at the end of the day, the students in my classroom circle up, and they think about one thing from school that they are grateful for that day and then share it out with the whole group. You are going to hear a couple of my students explaining gratitude in their own words and also explaining how it makes them feel. One thing I wanna provide context for is you might hear a couple of them say, if we run out of time, we will throw it into the circle or do fireworks. And if we are having a very busy day, but I still wanna make sure that gratitude takes place, I will have the students whisper their gratitude into their hand, and then they'll hold on to it, and we either all say it at the same time and throw it into the middle of the circle, or I came up with gratitude fireworks, where they whisper their gratitude to themselves, and then we have our hands together, we go up, make a clap, and then share our gratitude as the fireworks. This is just a way to ensure that gratitude takes place even in those moments where there's not a lot of time. So I hope you enjoy hearing from my students. And on a personal note, I love this part of the day, hearing what and who my students are grateful for and just taking a moment for us to all be thoughtful together. Thanks.
I need to do a quick apology. We couldn't get the soundbites to work, and everybody appreciates that kind of cuteness, but we don't have it for you tonight.
Hello, my name is Sarah Moffett Amryan, and I'm
So the last piece, as we finish up tonight, what's the big takeaway here? The person who does the talking truly is doing the learning. We may have always been under the impression that it's the other way. That's how we were taught. You sit in the classroom, someone talks, you listen, and you learn. Educational researcher and professor Richard Allington found that in highly effective classrooms, teachers used a more conversational means of talk versus interrogational. Students talk more with their peers about ideas, concepts, hypotheses, and responses to others' thinking. Idea number two. Although the learning pyramid model has too many variables to be precise, one idea still rings true. Teaching others is the best way to retain information. In the brain, teaching others helps solidify neural pathways and making more connections and allowing the recall of information more rapidly and conceptualization on a much larger scale. Talented teachers, like the staff here at Thornapple, have strategies to introduce and guide the energy of conversations in any subject. Student talk lives in everything from math to art, from gym to reading. Listening and speaking is human work. The ability to share ideas, conversations, themes around an author's purpose, citing evidence from books, happens daily at Thornapple. Sure, there are intentional parts of the day where working quietly and silently are the norm, but this generation is one that we face with challenges that require working together, sharing ideas, and mastering the human worldwide ability of speaking and listening to each other. This is intentional work, and it matters to all of us. I'd like to thank you for being at Thornapple. I'd like to thank everyone who sat a hand in the renovation of the school. We are coming up on just a couple weeks away from finishing. If you didn't get to P. If you didn't get to peek in, don't go in, we'll get in trouble. But if you didn't get to peek in our new library space that they were working on as you walked in, they're just laying carpet and getting those doors. And uh furniture moved in and we should have that back in running in January. I'd like to thank our troupe, three, six, three, four. Thank you for being, they're gone. And uh, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Emma, and our student Charlotte, and one for their voices in tonight's presentation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lyon. I was thinking as you went through that, I um feel like I used a lot of those in my work today. First of all, I can't do anything without a whiteboard. And we even do gratitude circles in one of my weekly meetings. Basically, we don't call it that and there are no fireworks, but we actually do like to give out the thank yous. So um these are skills that will serve them well for a long time. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, if that wasn't enough, we have more highlights here. I believe uh Mrs. Davis is gonna share with us.
Yes, Julie Davis, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations is here tonight to provide just an update on where we are with the dollars that have been provided to the school district through the state of Michigan and the federal government uh through the Emergency Secondary and Elementary Recovery Act and commonly known as ESER. And Mrs. Davis is just gonna provide us with an update as to where we are with our ESER three funding. Mrs. Davis.
Excellent. Good evening. Um, I actually provided a very brief update at our Board Finance Committee that was held last week. And so we thought as a group it'd be a great idea to share that update here at tonight's board meeting. So um to tell you where we're at, we need to tell you where we've been and just a little reminder about what ESER three and the requirements that we have as a system. Um, so there are two different buckets for it. Um, we have our formula bucket and our equalization bucket. You can see on the screen, our formula bucket is a little over two million dollars. Um, we're required to spend twenty percent on that to address learning loss with our students. Um, we submitted our application to the Michigan Department of Education and that was approved back on June thirteenth. And that funding ends here at the end of September in 2024. Our equalization bucket is significantly larger. As you can see, that's about eight and a half million dollars. Um, that bucket has a lot more restrictions than our formula bucket. We can only spend um those funds on particular targeted groups of students. Um, and then there's some other requirements that go along. You can see we have to spend about fifty one point four percent or four point three million dollars to address learning loss. Uh, ten point three percent or eight hundred seventy six thousand on both summer enrichment and after school, before school programs. Um, that application was also submitted and approved uh to the Michigan Department of Education at the end of, during the middle of June there. And that funding also ends September thirtieth, 2024. Um, so what did we submit on our two different applications? So on the formula uh budget, we have uh what we call behavioral support aids. Um, within the district, we call those surge aids. Um, so they support our kindergarten and our first grade classrooms. Um, and we have that built into the budget for this current school year as well as the next school year. Um, we also have our Tier Two Academic Behavior Specialist Schools, our new positions. They support our students across the entire district in grades K through twelve. And we have those for this year and next school year as well. Um, we purchased uh some decodable books as the board approved that. Um, our IXL licensing was approved as well. And it also contains um uh funds for our summer program and this past summer and then the next two summers as well. And then the larger bucket, the eight and a half million dollars for equalization. Um, that budget also contains uh those two stepping positions we spoke about in the formula budget. Um, but also contains uh several other positions. So we have a special education behavioral liaison. Um, that's budgeted for this year and next year. We have our special education instructional coach, which we're very excited about and has already hit the ground running um again for this school year and next. Um, it's fun helping to fund, support some special education teachers with our ASD and our resource room uh students. And that um started actually uh last year and the next two school years. Again, supported our decodable books and IXL. Um, we're excited because it also uh helped fund some curriculum enhancements for our special education program in terms of writing revolution and Teach Town, and those are a couple of areas that you actually approved as a board um at the end of last year. Um, it also has provided uh some professional development for special education teachers and and they went to an Orton-Gillingham training this summer and this fall. They're continuing to do that work. Um, and then you can see the last two, uh we have summer programming and after school programming um through the life of the grant. So that was really the gist of what we provided, what we thought was important. It's kind of, you know, the money came up, we talked about it, we talked about it, and um and then not worth implementing. Um, and through the life of the grant, we have the ability to amend that budget with the state and seek approval if, if something happens and we find that maybe there's something um that we need to do to provide additional support in terms of like the equalization and our targeted for the students. We can uh propose an amendment to the state and seek approval for that. So I don't know if you have any questions?
No, excellent. I heard that it was a great report in the finance committee, so I appreciate sharing with the larger audience tonight for sure. Any other comments or questions?
I would just point out uh that again, we know across the country, the pandemic had the largest negative effects on students with disabilities and students who are already struggling academically in school even prior to the pandemic. And we see similar things here. What you see are large portion of our largest bucket in the equalization area, helping our students with disabilities also in those early grades. What we wanna do is to help students that maybe didn't have the same opportunities as we'd see in a typical incoming kindergartner, where they've already had many experiences out with other kids, whether that's in preschool or different playgroups or the like. And many of the students at this grade level miss those opportunities. So these aids can help in a variety of ways and keep the teacher focused on instruction. Sometimes it's just helping to get their winter clothes on, if you will, to go outside uh or get them off uh when they come back in for instruction uh and the like on that. So it makes a, makes a big difference on that as we go forward. And then those Tier Two uh academic specialists, those are helping across all of our buildings. And what we're doing there is where a gap arises, we wanna be able to address that right away and uh close that gap right away. The longer that gap persists, the harder it is to address it over time. So those have been really important positions for us all across the district. And certainly our uh additional time with students in the summer and after school has already made a big difference. I had more teachers talk to me about the summer program that we had this summer and the intentionality of that and how engaged students were. And having the students that most needed uh that additional time to help close those learning gaps, what an important piece that was. Uh, so thanks uh Julie for this update as well. Companies understand where these dollars are going over the next couple of years. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent Bean, it looks like before we get to the consent grouping, you have another item on the agenda.
Yes, uh sort of uh continuing with the theme of gratitude circles. Uh, tonight is a night of uh big expression of gratitude. Two of our members of our Board of Education are winding up their public service to our community and our district and our schools. And I could not be more grateful for Nicole Gregory and Suzanne Callahan for putting in all the time that they have volunteering their service to help in so many different ways. Nicole, when I think it's been six years, my gosh, how quickly that time has passed. Uh, but I am so grateful for the entrepreneurial spirit that you have brought to this position. Uh, our conversations about innovation and uh execution and constantly growing a system and getting better and better and adaptations. Uh, I, I will always cherish those. I won't ever forget those. And it's already had uh a big tangible impact in the district. It's had a tangible impact on my thinking as well. Also, your advocacy for everyone's wellbeing, students and staff members, and how important it is uh just to treat one another well. And uh also to make the time that students come together, to make that enjoyable, to make that a fun experience as well. I can think of conversations we've had about um mixing up, even if it's a lunch hour and a food truck, or it's sometimes Operation Sunshine. Yes, little things uh and, and all those little things add up and make a big difference. So uh your impact uh over these six years has been tremendous and will live on long after your time here. And I would just say, I know uh you've got five children and I, I know they'll continue to have an impact, but uh thank you for all of your time with the members of board, with me personally, with the cabinet team and all of the district staff. We really appreciate it. To uh say thank you, we've got uh a, a couple of little gifts here for you. Uh, and one of them, we couldn't wrap because one of them is we will plant a tree on uh one of the areas of your choosing on the district campus. And in honor of your service, and that tree will forever be uh the Nicole Gregory tree. And it will continue to grow just like your influence does and everything you've done. So thank you, Nicole. Yes. And also for Suzanne Callahan, who's been serving so aptly as a board president. Suzanne, I've lost track of how many years uh it's, it's been. Yes, absolutely. And uh your time in serving in the district has always been with a uh, an attitude toward selfless service. It's always been about what is it uh that you can bring that can help kids and help students? And again, uh like Nicole, you bring to the table your experiences around leadership, around organizations and organizational culture, around innovation and helping people. And your biggest impact is, is still taking place. And that's your advocacy for our strategic plan, which we are still in somewhat the early stages, but we are confidently moving forward with that process. And I already can see the great results. That is yielding and I'm so excited to see what that will continue to do as we progress throughout not only the rest of this school year, but all through the execution phase of that planning process. Again, I cannot thank you enough for uh your selfless service and your sacrifices you've brought to this volunteer position. You have given so much of your time and your great thinking. And I'm excited to share with you what that impact will be over time as we go forward on it. And also for you, uh likewise, we have a tree that would be planted at a, on our campus at a place of your choosing, uh again, to demonstrate that, that impact lives on. And as that tree grows and grows, uh it shows the impact that one individual can have on an entire community and an entire system. So thank you, thank you Suzanne. Thank you uh both Suzanne and Nicole uh for being great examples of selfless public servants who are here simply to help kids. Thank you both. Congratulations. Uh, and this will always be a place that is home, so don't be a stranger to that all. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, oh, no, no, no. Can you mute her? You know, and I look around the table, it's many young people, but there is so much history here and we're celebrating a gift, but it's a significant loss and it makes me kinda sad. I'm thrilled that you are being followed by people that can hopefully fill those shoes. But I mean, some of it makes me giggle, there are so many fond memories. But you know, like Suzanne and I, the more traditional, a lot of us kind of evolved into these positions from being really entrenched in all things PTO and otherwise, following our child's paths. And one of my youngest was in uh Edavista in Junior Grade Books. I had Suzanne's son in the program. And she was also a Junior Grade Books facilitator and she suggested many ways that the program could run better. I'm like, oh my gosh, that woman's a dynamo. So flash forward a few years and we decide through academic boosters at high school, we need to put on a college panel. And next thing you know, Suzanne's creating a flyer for it. I still use it to this day. I do change the dates, but otherwise it has served its purpose. And I thought, oh my gosh, this woman's a dynamo. So all of a sudden, Dr. Fanner was retiring and any competent organization is going to try to fill a bench. And I remember sitting in the car one day and one more time she had done a dynamo. I said, have you ever considered board service? And I will never forget her answer. She said, just tell me how I'm supposed to serve. And that's one of those things that makes me a little sad because that's really a very selfless way to look about a commitment to an organization. And it was amazing and I will never forget that I was sitting in my car at a place in Frankfurt, Illinois. So anyway, it was cool. It has been an asset and a gift to have you at the table and we're gonna miss you horribly. And then when you look at Nicole, it's kinda funny because Nicole came about in a very non-traditional way. And as you heard, Nicole is get, leave fellow, get out of the way. Nicole gets things done. And she came in one day and said, I'd like to be on the board. And our traditional board said, well, we're not really sure who you are. And she said, well, that's okay, I'm gonna be on this board. And she was. And it was such a gift because I remember, you know, those people that pay attention to detail, I tend to, or I used to, have a really good memory and know what's going on around me. And she sat across from me at the coffee table and said, yeah, you and I have a connection. Your husband and I are both from Marquette. I'm like, oh, I'm sorry, what? That was impressive that she just knew what was going on around her and she has brought that skill and gift to the table every step of the way, always just having a sense of what's going on, on how to bring that information to decision making and whatnot. And these ladies both held with a similar passion and talent in communications and marketing and whatnot. And we've said numerous times over the years that that's, you know, communication, information is power. And they helped the district launch a communications resource team. I think that had to be six years ago. Yeah, cuz you were there, so five or six years ago. And it was amazing. And many of the people that were on that team are not with us anymore, but it helped pave the path to this emphasis and interest we have in making sure that becomes a uh, a, a priority and a critical part of an organized organization. So um very sad to see you leave, but very thrilled that we got to have you with us for, since October fifteenth and January seventeenth.
And I would also like to say, I, I'm not gonna use as many words as Mary. I, I don't think anybody ever could.
Suzanne, Suzanne.
Perhaps Suzanne did. But I, you guys have both provided such a strong foundation here and given up the newer members of the board really a nice, strong base for hopefully providing continued success for Forest Hills. And I feel a little bit bad because the district is giving you a tree which will grow forever and ever and we have flowers for you which are going to die. And I swear that is not intentional, it doesn't have any hidden meaning, but think of them as being cheerful um and beautiful and a welcoming presence as you guys both have always been on the board to all of us. We will miss you.
Yes, and I would just echo all those sentiments. Um, two years on the board has been an incredibly steep learning curve. And I feel like without both of your guidance and just kind of your instruction and this is what we need to focus on, this is the job that we have to do, it would have been very easy to get more overwhelmed than I already was and more bogged down feeling in details that were not necessarily the job of the board. And so I am so thankful that you were there to say, I know this feels like a really big deal, but here's what we really need to do with this district forward. And I know you can do that and you can help with that. And so you've just been incredible mentors and you are so good at empowering people to do the job that they need to do for the district. So I really appreciate the last two years and what I've learned from both of you.
And if you think I'm deleting your cell numbers, you're crazy. I will simply say thank you for all of your leadership and for leaving very, very large shoes for all of us to, to take up now and continue. My kids will feel the effects of your work and your leadership for decades more uh in this district. So thank you, of course.
Excellent. Yes, CJ, you have decades to go and you can call me from Frankfurt, Illinois anytime. Anytime. Good, all right, well, thank you. With that, let's move on to the business at hand. I need a motion to approve the consent grouping. Anyone?
I move that we approve consent grouping number seven A through C.
Excellent. And do I have a second? Support. Okay. Um, is there any item in here that a board member would like to bring out for special consideration? Superintendent Bean, anything you wanna draw attention to or do reports?
No.
Okay. With that, why don't we move to curriculum? And I think CJ, you were gonna give the update today for us.
Yes, indeed, it was a good month to fill in uh for Maggie because it was a fairly light agenda um and a, and a fairly brief meeting. Just three uh topics that I would bring um to all of our attention. One, we were joined by Mr. Gregory, who came in and gave us an overview of a tool he has created and is still crafting, uh a, a choice board for everything secondary enrollment and scheduling. Um, a great project to cullate all the various resources from AP to, to all the course description guides, KCTC, to, to summer school, to everything related um to enrolling. It will help to minimize the, the paper necessities of all of these things, kind of be a one stop shop for all of that information. And it's forward thinking to how it can connect to, to Power School and to our other resources to really make it a very user friendly tool for students and, and parents. So we got a good look at, at how that is shaping up. Um, and I'm sure we're involved with that in the month. in the months ahead. The second piece, the only real business piece, was the approval of four books coming to us tonight, all from Northern Trails. The book Epic Fail of Arturo Sarmora by Apollos Cartaya, Muhammad Ali, The Greatest of All Time by James Buckley and Andy Dugan, Sal and Gabby Break the Universe by Carlos Hernandez, and Spy School by Stuart Gibbs. So, those are here for us tonight. And the final piece was just a couple of great discussions that have happened the last couple of weeks around the topic of literacy and elementary reading. Kind of a spotlight of sorts that's been shined on the topic recently, and it was a great opportunity for us to overview and review and had some great discussions with Superintendent Beam and Assistant Superintendent Hayde, just about the resources that we have here and the many things that we do, that we put in our teachers' labs to use as they are our greatest resource. And so, again, and as Superintendent Beam said, "Learning is a guiding principle of ours, and that applies to us just as much as it applies to students." And so, it's never a bad time to just to step back and look at what we're doing and always a good time to see if there's anything we can do better and to take those opportunities if they come. So, good discussion around that topic as well. And I think that is all.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for CJ tonight? Well done. Well, see, you're going to be fine. All right. All right. Let's move into finance.
All right. Couple of basic items. The approval of the minutes from 11:15, 22, as well, the payment of bills. Our financials, we're at the fiscal part of the year where it's 40% fiscal and 27% school year. So, I would like to, probably next month or month after, you're pretty much even. So, part of our bills go out early, and then the year, you know, obviously continues on. So, when you see that, it's just kind of fun to see. Look for. Three basic, or action items that we need to look at is bus rotation. We're at that type of year, we're taking buses out of their lifecycle. We need to approve our four new school buses, 77 passenger school buses. We're utilizing a purchasing program, and the vendor that is chosen is the Midwest Transit. This comes from our capital projects of 2021 for $507,000. We also have something for absolute software license, which covers our 10,800 Chromebooks. This allows us to keep the Chromebooks safe. They tend to, one, get lost in multiple locations, and as well, when we're checking in and checking out, we know who has these books. So, that is an approval. The vendor is CDW. The amount is not to exceed $254,000, and this comes from our general fund. And that's just a renewal of a license. It's a three-year license. Power School enhancement. Everyone knows Power School, and it's developing new technologies all the time. Some other districts have some of the things they want to go through, but it's really about how we're acquiring forms. And as you know, the beginning of the school year, there's a million forms, and having five kids every year, like, oh my, like, the whole night of sitting down signing forms and making sure they're getting put back. Yeah, you know CJ with four kids. So, this is great. So, a lot of it can be done digitally with one signature, and it moves it all the way through the process. So, it's a really nice. It's also, there's a part of it that's called Talent Ed. It's a professional learning part, and our instructors have requirements for their educational components. So, this allows them to go to different courses, get signed off, and it stays right in their records as well. There's one more, kind of, just yet, the forms, and then they express enroll. Okay. And then that is from the general fund for $62,000, and that is it.
Excellent. Less paper. Nice. That's my takeaway tonight. All right. With that, I think we are looking for a roll call vote. Señora, Mrs. Boggs, sorry. Still señora to me.
No, señora is good. Mr. Bichette?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Mrs. Callahan?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Superintendent Beam. I think you have a couple informational items, and then you can roll into your superintendent.
Sure. Just one informational item, that I've approved a reservation consistent with our policy and master agreements. Then for my report tonight, I'd just like to say thank you to the Thornapple staff and community. Thank you to our wonderful PTO here and all of our great Thornapple and Ranger students that I saw all throughout our building welcoming us here tonight. We are very excited to wrap up the renovations here at this building later this spring, and it's great to be here tonight to see that several of those phases complete, but also that we're continuing on. I'd like to report tonight that we had a wonderful meeting in the past week with our several first responding groups and entities throughout Kent County. We met with the Director of Kent County Emergency Management, the Assistant Director of Kent County Emergency Management, our three school resource officers from the Kent County Sheriff's Department, the Chiefs of the Fire Departments, and our three townships, Ada, Cascade, and Grand Rapids Township, and a couple other additional first responders as well, and all of the administrators in the district. And we used that time, as we've done previously, to go through a variety of training pieces and tabletop exercises to better understand how all of our systems are working and how we can make improvements as well as we go through those different scenarios, and then talk about what it is that we would do. And then after, debrief about areas where we can strengthen and also share resources and information across our system and with our community partners. We are very grateful for all of our first responders and everything they do for us to make sure our schools are safe and secure places for our staff members and families and students every single day. So, that was a great meeting, and we look forward to more of those as we go forward in the future as well. And finally, I just will keep it brief tonight, but just to express my gratitude. We heard from Mr. Lyon about gratitude circles that take place in the building. My own daughters were expressing their gratitude today. I don't know if it's because it's their first Monday that they have a break, but they were in that mood to want to, now we express our own gratitude, but hear from their parents as well. And it just reminds me, again, how fortunate we are to live where we do, to have a wonderful, supportive community, to have people who are involved in supporting our schools, to have incredible staff members all the way throughout the organization, those that are in front of students each day, and those who are behind the scenes, helping our teachers do their work and making sure our buildings and our places are all ready for learning and getting our students here and home safely, all of that work. And then also, our Board of Education, as we wrap up this final meeting of 2022, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for all of your work. It's also an opportunity for me to say thank you to the board's recording secretary and my assistant, Val Cometz. Val, thank you for all of your great work throughout this year in keeping us on track and organized, and that's no simple feat with me. So, thank you, Val, for all of that work as well. So, as we wrap up these last few weeks of 2022, I wish everyone a sense of gratitude for all the things in our life that helps our kids grow and helps our community thrive. And I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy 2023. And once again, a huge thanks from my office for our two retiring board members, and congratulations to our two new board members, Holly and Mallory, who will be coming on as well. So, look forward to a great new year. That's my report tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. We have a couple more things here at this point. Are there, is there any board communication that we need to cover?
I just have a really, just two quick things from the foundation. Just a reminder that the winter grant cycle will open up for teachers right after break, and they can apply fhpff.org for that. That's the big grant cycle that the foundation does. They just start on the fall too. And then just to say thank you to the foundation. I'm on the PTO as well for Net Forest, and I was not able to attend the last Power of the PTO event that the foundation put on, but they did it about two weeks ago. This is an effort that they are really working hard to just really create relationships amongst PTOs at all of the schools in the district. I think that that's something that is needed. I think it's an incredible resource. I know other members of my PTO went to that breakfast, and they said, again, it's just so great to hear other ideas. Sometimes you get kind of just siloed into your own building, doing what you've always done in your building. And so, it's just really a cool opportunity to learn some new experiences for kids that other schools are doing and having success with. So, we, I know as board, but also all the PTOs are so thankful that the foundation is working to be that bridge.
Excellent. Yes, I know that you do get very involved as a former PTO mom. It's nice to go across at the same grade levels, but then also to have some of the more seasoned parents. We like to say that you learn along the way. So, it's a great sense of community. Excellent. Any other board communication?
Just quick. As we get to hear about elevating student voice today, it makes me reflect on the fact that our Student Advisory Council meets with our superintendent monthly. You may recall, we had a student approach us at a recent meeting concerned about dress code. And that same discussion topic came up at some of the Student Advisory Council meetings, not a superintendent issue. And it was so delightful to see these students being modeled by their administrators about how to work through issues of concern. And they held a special meeting a couple weeks ago, and I, with some trepidation, wrote to the administrators and said, "I hope everything went okay." And they said, "It was delightful. We have an action plan. We appreciate the homework the kids did. The kids felt empowered. They feel like part of the equation. They felt their voice was heard." So, thank you for giving them that opportunity, and it was just delightful to see that whole process play in a way that is modeling for them how to deal with conflict and problem resolution as they go forward in life. So, there you go.
Excellent. Yes, that's been enjoyable to watch that process, because it doesn't matter the topic. It's just to see the process that they navigate it through. Excellent. All righty. Well, if there are no other board communications, we will move into public comments at this time. So, I will open this up to the community, and what we like to do is, if there are, which I don't believe I see any, but we always like to open it up to students first. So, if there are any students that would like to address the board, we would invite them first, followed by parents and, or staff, if there are any staff, and then community members. And when you approach, if you could please limit your comments to three minutes, and we will listen intently. So, if anybody would like to join us, now is the time.
Would anyone else like to go before us?
Well, first of all, Merry Christmas to each and every one of your family. I truly mean it from my bottom of my heart. Okay? We are all on the same team. We believe in kids. So, I know that sometimes we create division, but we are passionate about kids, and I think you need to listen to some of the things that we say. At the last Board of Education meeting, Superintendent Beam had claimed certain things don't happen here in Forest Hills. We understand this is a working meeting, but it's the only time when the entire board is in one place to hear our briefances. There is no other platform currently. The board had created a diversity and inclusion, equity and inclusion position while thinking of long-term consequences. The main outcome of this position has created division in our community where there was none spun, was none. I've asked Superintendent Beam several, several times to eliminate this position, both in private and publicly. Let me demonstrate several examples. Last month's school board meeting, we had a guest speaker showcasing autism and dyslexia leaks. When I was at elementary school, schools administrators used words like retarded and imbeciles. I know that sounds absurd, but that's exactly what you're doing, dividing our community into groups. My oldest son was diagnosed in first grade with severe reading disorder. He was placed in the IEP program and remained there into a senior year. During his last IEP meeting with teachers and counselors, it was the first time the word dyslexia came up by a senior counselor. She explained, "We don't use labels on kids as they did in the past, as it destroys their confidence and divides them from the rest of the student body." A very wise counselor. The board has taken us back into the 50s, 60s, and 70s. Is this really the direction we want to go? I'd also like to bring another point up to attention about an incident that happened at Forest Hills Northern two weeks ago during a health class, when a guest speaker from a safe space for everyone showed up or came to speak. The speaker talked about having students transition without their parents' knowledge. I also understand that this behavior is not supported by this board, but because you allowed a small group of LGBTQ to control the agenda, these creates windows of opportunity for this group. If anyone in the board or administration is interested in more details, you know how to reach me. This is a very sensitive in nature, and personal reputations are at stake. At a minimum, an investigation needs to occur. Thank you.
Jared Jackpoff, I've been in the district for 35 years, and I have to give the superintendent an A+ for his adroit presentation at last month's meeting. However, there's a D- on content, the gist of which was, "There's nothing to see here, folks. Your concerns are either figments of paranoid political imaginations, or if any are legit, they're being appropriately addressed. Trust us." If true, I wondered how have you managed to make Forest Hills the sole island of sanity in a sea of woke madness flooding schools from Virginia all the way to San Francisco and everywhere in between? Even our neighbors in Ottawa County have teachers resigning because of curriculum being infused with wokeism and, yes, specifically CRT. I figured the only way Mr. Beam's assertions could be valid, and that is Forest Hills has nothing but old-school teachers who are about 60 years old, who all got their degrees some four decades ago, before the millennial generation, the mid-20s to early 40s, who have gotten indoctrinated ever more intensely and purposely, especially by schools of higher education providing degrees in education. I'd bet dollars to degrees that the majority of teachers here are of that second, younger demographic and mindset. Mr. Beam assured us that 19 months ago, he had never heard or knew anything about CRT. However, in June of 2020, some 30 months ago, the superintendent sent out a very telling letter to the district, and that convinced me, oh yeah, CRT and the warped woke agenda was in fact being woven into our kids' education. A limited 2021 FOIA request revealed hundreds of intra-board communications in which the term "critical race theory" was found, many in 2020 and prior to that letter, which declared in effect that only white people were guilty of race hate, that white people created racism, and that white people needed to atone for their racist sins, and that our schools were well-suited for that education. And the resources specified for parents were all in sync with the diversity and inclusion goals, joined at the hip with the goals of CRT proponents. Thanks, but no thanks. I'm probably beating a dead dog here by reiterating yet again how effective Mr. Beam's directives have been, as demonstrated by mixed-race kids in my neighborhood who accused their white, white family members of being racist oppressors, as they were educated at Northern by their teachers. There are many more examples, but I do not have more time. Actually, CRT or inappropriate books are not the problems. They are disturbing symptoms of the problem, which is so deeply rooted in the education system, top to bottom to top. Merry Christmas.
My husband and I, we are from the Grandville area, now Byron Center, but we raise all eight of our children in the Grandville school system. Well, I'm just here to express, my heart is very heavy with what's going on in our world today. Our children never experience racism in Grandville. I grew up in the Detroit area, primarily in California, ended up in Detroit. My sister became a professional opera singer through Dr. Karen and David DeCare, who were white, who seen her in elementary school and seen a gift inside of her and helped promote her. She went on to go to U of M and traveled all over the world. She went on to go to U of M and traveled all over the world. I'm very discouraged and very disheartened by what I'm hearing about this critical race theory. To me, critical race theory has no place in our schools, zero place in our schools. We are all made in the image of God, every one of us. As my husband often says, we are all just different shades of dust, all of us. To me, there's an agenda out here trying to destroy each and every one of us. And I want to encourage you parents to wake up, wake up from this woke agenda. Teach our children reading, writing, and arithmetic. This is what our children need. Our children do not know what they need. We cannot allow our children to lead us. We must lead our children. It is vital that we do that. I have sons now who are on, you can look them up if you want. They're an influencer on YouTube, have about a million followers and subscribers, who's waking people up and teaching and showing them the way. I want to say this also, please teach our children the United States Constitution and the Michigan Constitution. Please. As I look back and I remember back in the day, the white people fought for us. We had 300,000 men that fought for us, which we were freed from slavery. And then we had great inventors coming out, all of these Booker T. Washington, all of these Sela Good, these black African Americans who went on to become millionaires. What happened? To me, this is an agenda against the black culture in the name of critical race theory. We must wake up and realize this is a demonic force against humanity. And I know you guys don't mean any harm, but I do believe there's an ignorance that's out here, and people need to wake up and see the whole agenda is to separate us all, to divide us, and we must not allow this to happen on our world. We must stand together against this evil, critical, critical race theory garbage sent from the pit of hell. We must stop it.
This presentation is NC 17. If there's children present or anyone under the age of 18, please leave. Vincent Monarch, you'll find me at 6860 Cascade Road. On 10/17/22, in this forum, Superintendent Beam stated that he and the board strove to create a quote "culture for love of reading and continue learning through reading." Given that, I'm going to read from a book called Tricks by Eleanor Hopkins, located at Central and Northern High, pages 206, 299, and 302. Cocaine, clean as you can find anywhere. I inhale gently, one line up the right nostril, the other up the left. Immediately, both sides of my nose go cold and numb. Oh my God, no wonder people like this drug. His rough hands go straight to my boobs. You like it rough? Because I'm just the guy to give it to you that way. I already paid $200 for a good time with you. He is on me, in me, humiliating me in every possible way. And just who would sell me? The answer is all too obvious. Iris, my mother. I find the pinesol and carry it to the shower. It stings, which means it's working. I scrub my body over and over, washing away all evidence of this afternoon. This non-historical fiction has other graphic depictions of child prostitution, medical quackery, and the promotion of drug use. It does not attempt to dissuade drug use or give advice on how to protect against rape. What will our children learn through reading this? Will they learn how to use cocaine? Will they learn that pinesol, that will cover the smell of a rape? So why not use the book review policy? Because I and possibly many others don't trust it in its current form to yield balanced reproducible results. There's no objective standards that have been set by the board or the superintendent on how to measure age appropriateness by grade level. The scientific method relies on measurable parameters to provide us with reproducibility. These parameters allow us to be confident in separating logical from illogical conclusions. This book review process is not exempt from objective analysis, and that requires objective standards. Four months ago, I met with Scott Hayden. He tasked me with searching for any other school district implementing objective standards. I've gotten through Western Michigan and I continue the search, but this should not delay our good stewardship to our children. If you believe that FHPS is the best, then be the first in West Michigan to set objective standards and prove it. I brought my search for nationally acceptable standards on book reviews to assist you. CompassBookratings.com, MyRatedReads.com, MyBookHive.com all provide national publicly used measurable parameters for language, violence, sexual content, and drug use. We could also use the Motion Picture Association standards that I'm using each board meeting. This book fails all four. I will pass you a permit with all the standards that I have mentioned. I really urge you to look at all of them for the next 30 days so that you, the administrative board, and we, the people, can decide how to promote informed, positive role models that children can learn from through reading.
You could just hand those to Val. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. This may be a little bit different, but I wanted to thank you for all of the members.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, sure. Sorry. I'm Shannon, Shannon Ford. I have two students here at Thornapple and a will-be student who is not quite three years old. But I am fairly new to the district, so I come to you as a fairly new member of this community. My husband and I have had the opportunity to live in many, many great states across our nation, and he's also had a chance to live in England. So we come with a different perspective, perhaps, than other people who are in this room. I also come to you as a licensed clinical social worker in the state of Michigan, so I also have the opportunity to have had worked with a variety of people across many demographics across this country. And now I am able to mold those roles, social worker, mother, community member. So I am thrilled to be able to be an active participant in this community and to hear my very young children come home so enthusiastic about what they're learning at school, so proud of what they're learning at school. We tend to follow more Christian-based upbringing in our home, although we try and have a home where we teach our kids that what we believe isn't what everybody believes, and that's okay. But they came home from school a couple of weeks ago to share with us that one of their classmates had a parent come in and explain to them what Hanukkah was, and they learned all about it. And it just so happened that that night I took them to the Frederick Meyer Gardens to see their festive holiday display, and they were so excited to see Adradal and the display set aside that was specifically following Hanukkah. And they knew it, and they were proud. They know Christmas. They know that. They know that it's the birth of Jesus, and they're proud of that, too. But they were so excited about learning something that was different, and that was about their classmates' life. And that, to me, is what's being done in the schools. It's helping broaden their minds to learn more about their classmates, to learn more about others. We speak a lot in our home about privilege, because I have no problem explaining that I am a privileged woman. That doesn't mean I haven't faced adversity. We're humans. We all face adversity. Privilege is about, in my opinion, what resources do you have at your disposal to help you through that adversity? So we also have open discussions in our home about what that means and how our children have their own privileges. And so that, to me, opens a door if they come across students at school who maybe don't carry the same privileges that they do, that I don't want home to be the only space where they're allowed to have these discussions. They spend so much time at school. The kids are gone from 8:15 a.m. until 4:30. They're under the supervision at school. They're also on a bus. Things happen. Kids are going to be exposed to things. They need their teachers. Their teachers tell them they love them. Our teachers mean so much to them. They trust them. So I am very grateful that we are building a school and community that is for the here and now and for the children that we are currently raising. Thank you all for the time you dedicate to this board. Really appreciate you.
Sorry. Tom Ancheck, I've been here before. You guys have my name on file. Merry Christmas, everyone. Hope you get time to spend with your families and enjoy that time together. My comments tonight are regarding the use of the Forest Hills Fine Arts Center. When we were scrambling to try and find a venue for the candidate forums, I was looking around and I noticed that East Grand Rapids and Granville and Rockford all were using their fine art center to host candidate forums for school board members. So after, I spent some time online and several uninserted emails and uninserted voicemails, I was finally able to speak to a gentleman who informed me that we would not be able to host our candidate forum because there was a clause in the rental agreement that prohibits such a use. And if I didn't like it, I could speak with Julie Davis if I didn't like it. So the other thing that I found out was there is a link on the website for the Forest Hills Fine Arts Center. It says, complete the Fine Arts Center building rental form. So I clicked on that link and I get a, you need a permission in order to access this forum. This forum can only be viewed by users in the owner's organization. Try contacting the owner of the forum if you think this is a mistake. So just thought I'd bring this to your attention, that it is very difficult to try and rent this facility, the Fine Arts Center. I think it would be a wonderful place to hold a candidate forum for everyone, and hopefully we can get this situation resolved. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Over the past year, a number of us have been privileged enough to be working with the transportation department. And as of Friday, we did another monthly celebration just before the holidays so that they could enjoy one last 2022 special. That is also the same day that we found out that Todd Sharp has retired and that there will be an interim director that will be coming in to provide some support in that department. Having the opportunity over the past year to be able to spend time with the drivers and the staff, I do want to bring a different perspective to this in that, you know, we do have a candidate right here in our area that can fill that director role. And I would ask that you would take the time to consider this person for this role. And I would like to read some feedback from the current staff and also from staff members that have been in that department and have resigned or moved on to a different position. This one is from someone who has been in that department for two and a half years. She has seen many improvements since Nicole has been there. Last year, Todd was gone for most of it or just never came in. She stepped up and ran the department on her own. And most of this year, she has done the same. She backs the drivers when needed and has talks when needed. Someone tell you she is hard to work for, not if you do your job and show up on time. She is qualified to be a director and has been doing it. She has taken the time to do the work and schooling to improve herself for the director position. Besides, we need to promote with it. Another driver. When Nicole was hired as our riding supervisor and now supervisor to our transportation department, our department was still in this dysfunction mode and of course COVID issues. We all know about COVID. What you didn't realize or want to accept was the disrespected anger amongst drivers and dysfunction of our transportation office. You hired Todd Sharp as director to oversee the department and fellow supervisor. They left shortly after being hired, and now Todd has retired. During all of this, Nicole has been this in our department, rough. Nicole has brought morale back in respect amongst the drivers, office staff in this department. She knows this transportation department and drivers inside and out. Yes, there's still a very small handful of drivers that continue to block the system no matter who you put in that authority. This issue, I believe, should be the Human Resource Department responsibility. Is Nicole young? Yes. But Dan, how young and inexperienced were you 17 years ago when you arrived at Forest Hills? We are now in need of a new director. Please do not be the ones to cause this department to slide backwards. Nicole is a very vital part and person for our transportation department. Another one. I have been driving since 1996, so I've seen a lot of people transportation industry. During a meeting with upper administration for GRPS, we were characterized as just trees in the forest. I will share these if you would like, because there are some left out. And I think that, given the time, that it would be well worth the read and the support. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Any other comments this evening? Oh, all right. Here we go. Could you say your name, please? Are you speaking or is your mom? Okay, all right. Okay.
My name's Emily. This is Evelyn Van Roy. We live in Quailcrest. I'm also one of your bus drivers. I'm just going to ride on what Mandy was just saying. This is actually why I'm here. I just, obviously, you guys know about a lot of changes that will be taking place, which we found out about recently. So I've seen a lot of changes. I've been there five years, but I have to say, and this is why I'm speaking, is just to speak on behalf of Nicole. I've worked with a lot of managers in the past. I've been a manager of a restaurant. Managing is difficult. People are difficult, and we have a huge staff. And we all have personalities and dynamics, but I have to say overall, Nicole, she has been an amazing leader. She goes above and beyond. If we ever need anything, she'll be right on it. I mean, she can do just about anything. You can imagine the kind of phone calls that come through our department. I'm glad I don't have to take them. You know, it's a tough, it's a tough job. She's, she will jump on the bus and help out if she needs to. She's there after hours. She goes above and beyond. So I just, I'm giving her high accolades. So I would recommend her for the director position. I don't know if that's something she's interested in, but I am thankful that we have her. So anyway, Merry Christmas. See you in 2023, as all the kids said. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. Paul Doyle, you had me on fire. I'm an employee of the district. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but given that, the two statements by the two prior individuals, I need to come up here and say I affirm those recommendations. Nicole has held this department together. It's been a tough two years. I can't imagine what it would have been like if she hadn't been here holding it together. So I want to lend my support to her as a candidate. Please give her full and fair consideration. Thanks.
Thanks. All right. Well, if there are no other public comments, I will flip it over to you, Superintendent Beam, for any closing remarks.
Thank you, Paul. Just a few closing remarks. Doug, thank you for your comments. I realize this is the only space where we have all the board members together, and I am looking to try to create a venue and an environment where we can gather community members and talk about a variety of different things for our schools. I know that all of the people who spoke tonight, what we share in common is we care deeply about the success of our kids. We want our kids to be successful and go on and do amazing and wonderful things in our world. And I certainly acknowledge that the business meeting of the Board of Education isn't that great space for dialogue. So we need to create those spaces where people can respectfully provide a variety of viewpoints on a whole host of things on that. And I'd like to be able to do that, and I've talked with a few people on how we can do that in such a way so that it can be productive in all of those pieces on that. And just as I was taking some notes on other comments that came through tonight, about our teachers and our teacher training programs and the like, in Michigan, as it is the case in most states, if not all, teachers have to be certified by law in order to teach in a public school. And so our teacher preparation programs have to go through their own process to be approved by the state of Michigan to certify teachers for their work in our schools. And we could certainly have, I would love to engage in deeper dialogue and have with many folks at the university level about what that teacher preparation program could look like and how that could could look like and how that can best suit our teachers. I know that the vast majority of our teachers come to our schools, uh, looking to pass on knowledge and skills to our students and create experiences again so that our students can be most successful, uh, throughout life. I know there was a reference to a FOIA request about, uh, critical race theory and the amount of items that were there. In that FOIA request, what our board members receive and what I receive are news summaries. In fact, I get a news summary every day about education-related issues. And so when you do a FOIA request, what's seen in that, if you look at emails, because it's emailed to me, would be news summaries that include things like critical race theory in them, because it's been talked about, uh, in school districts all across our country and a, a topic of conversation at Board of Education meetings all across our country. And that's where those pieces come from. Uh, we have not had, um, some secret conversation or something like that about, uh, critical race theory. As I said last month, uh, when I first heard the term, uh, many, many months ago, I, I did not know what that was from, uh, or what that referenced. Uh, I, I do not believe that we don't teach our kids that only white people commit racism. As I meet with students, uh, students, the, the common refrain I get from students is, "Why don't we talk about race in our schools?" Seems to be a topic that's talked about a lot, uh, out in our world and our community. Why don't we talk about it in our schools? Uh, and I say, "Well, say more about that." They say, "Well, anytime I want to bring it up in the classroom," the teachers shut down that conversation. You don't want to have those conversations about that. And again, I think teachers are in a spot where, uh, they're, they're really wanting to teach students, uh, what many people have asked for here tonight, to focus on, uh, those basic skills that are going to be the building blocks for students to learn a whole host of things throughout their life that they're choosing on that. I know that, uh, we certainly, uh, talk about issues related to race in a historical context, whether that's a court case, Brown versus Board of Education, uh, whether that's, uh, issues around the Civil War or slavery, uh, a variety of pieces on that. We do have situations where families and students themselves can opt into additional, uh, activities outside of the regular curriculum to have conversations about, uh, race, about, religious, uh, faith traditions and the like, about differences that we all hold and how we can respect those differences, how we can stand up for one another without having to be a member of a particular group in some way, shape, or form. Again, those are, uh, additional activities we provide, uh, to our students or families and staff members outside of the school day as well. We do teach the U.S. Constitution. We teach it several times throughout the K-12, um, system on that. Uh, you can talk to our teachers about that. We have wonderful teachers, uh, that go through this and, uh, talk about, uh, many aspects of the Constitution, not only in its entirety, but also some of those issues in the Constitution that even our Supreme Court members will talk about from time to time. And that's a, uh, another point that, uh, even in the case of, uh, the, the Constitution being a document that has been, uh, in writing for quite some time and amended only a small handful of times, 26, 27 times, uh, it's still something that we have scholars across the country, uh, looking to see what those things mean. We engage our own scholars, our own students, uh, in beginning that work as well as we teach about the Constitution. About books, again, uh, we have been working through all of our books. We don't contain every single book that is published. That's not possible. Uh, but we have about a quarter of a million books in our collection. We believe that the entity to set the best standards are our parents. We trust our parents, uh, to make the decisions about what it is that's best for their students to be reading, and we want to partner with our parents about that. We don't want to surprise our parents, so we are trying to strengthen that partnership. And that's why with books that have more mature content in them at the high school level, we put a parent permission, uh, policy on certain books. Again, as we've looked, uh, about a, a quarter of a million books, it's a very small fraction of a hundredth of one percent, uh, that contain that. But we're willing at any time someone comes forward and sees something that, uh, again, looks like it might have, uh, that rating if it were a movie, that would be an R-rated movie, which we require parent permission for. If we're gonna show a 20-minute clip from Saving Private Ryan, uh, or, or something else in the classroom, we would want to do the same thing with the books. And I'm happy we've been able to strengthen that partnership as we've gone together, uh, throughout this, uh, past school year. In terms of anti-drug education, we have a comprehensive anti-drug education program that begins at, uh, the elementary school level and moves all the way through the high school level, and even involves high school students teaching younger students about, uh, the importance of, uh, safe and appropriate use of, uh, say it's a prescribed, uh, drug in some way, and we talk about those substances that are never safe or appropriate to be used. As a principal, Mr. Lyons and I have talked about, uh, the, the best way to learn something is to teach it to somebody else. So our students teaching this, our older students teaching it to our younger students really sets a powerful example. I know my own, um, children have mentioned that as well. As, uh, we were together at Thanksgiving and they saw an extended family member step outside to, uh, have a, a cigarette smoked. Uh, boy, I thought there was a big clam, because my kids came running to me with a big emergency, uh, that Uncle so-and-so was smoking a cigarette. So I know that education is, is taught, and, and we look to update that, sadly, as there are new, um, substances out there that we need to educate our students about as well. Our use of facilities for candidate forums, I appreciate, uh, you bringing that up as well. Uh, I am sorry for the difficulty on the technology piece and getting through that forum. It sounds like, uh, one of those frustrating closed loops you get into. We'll take a look at that. So thank you. Um, one of the things that we, uh, and I have heard from a couple of the school districts where the school district hosted the candidate forum, so they use their facilities in, in that regard. We have been, uh, careful about allowing our facilities to be used, uh, in a way that's considered a limited public forum, where once we open it up to one outside group, we have to open it up to all outside groups, because you cannot discriminate based on the, the viewpoint or the stance or anything from, from any other group on that. So we've used the rental for entertainment purposes. People have hosted memorial services there, weddings, other things like that in, in a limited way. But we've been careful not to, uh, create a situation on any one of our campuses, and the Fine Arts Center is, is, is one, but any one of our campuses where, uh, one group would say, "Well, you hosted this, so now we want to host something that we would see as, uh, not appropriate for, uh, a setting that, uh, we've got kids in, uh, K-12 education going on as well." But I'm happy to talk more about that. Uh, and, and certainly, uh, there's merits in school districts hosting those type of forums as well. Certainly an open issue on that. I want to say, uh, thank you, Mandy, uh, for your incredible support, uh, leading, uh, parents to support our transportation team. As we've heard from, uh, school districts across our state and the country, uh, it's been a challenge to find people to come and drive our most precious car to and from school on a crazy work schedule that begins really early in the morning, uh, and ends late in the afternoon and a, and a big chunk of time in the middle of the day. Uh, our bus drivers do amazing work, and I am, uh, so grateful for their work. I recently had the opportunity to do a ride-along, uh, with one of our drivers, and, uh, it was just an outstanding experience. I, I not only learned additional things about a driver, uh, who's a, uh, a veteran that goes all the way back, uh, to, uh, the Korea times on that, and, uh, he's also just a great role model, and I would even say teacher for our kids as well on that. So, um, thank you, Mandy, for the support that you are rallying with our community members. I know our community has great esteem for our drivers. Emily and Paul, thanks, uh, for stepping up and, uh, helping to do that so very important work. And I'm grateful for Nicole and our entire transportation team that have worked really hard this year. I know lots of people put in lots of extra hours, uh, to keep our buses not only on the road and in safe fashion, uh, but to also be picking up all of our students all across the community. It's important work, and it's work that, uh, we have to continue to remain vigilant. Our, our drivers, uh, we don't have a lot of margin, I would say, in that area. And, uh, I talked with this board about that, and we know that as a community and other communities are dealing with challenges around this issue, uh, there are some who are looking at this from a macro, uh, level as well, and I appreciate so much their work, uh, and, and working with, um, some other educational entities at the higher education level, really study this from a labor issue. Appreciate those efforts very much as well. So I just wanted to speak to those comments about those community members that came up tonight, and because it just says, says closing remarks, once again, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone, uh, for coming together and focusing on the one thing I know everyone agrees on, and that's the, uh, support and the care and the love that we have for our community. And it takes a huge community of people coming together, grandparents and people whose kids graduated long ago, and parents who are busy, uh, and wondering like the other adult in my household, "Why didn't we have three half-days in a row for elementary kids?" And all of those things, uh, that, that we sometimes, uh, need to step back and, and look at in so many different ways. But, um, thank you all for your support of our kids and our schools. Those are my closing remarks today.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Beam. Um, well, at this point, we need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We are all in favor. We adjourn.